Oh, good. Yeah, she actually, we're going on a trip and we asked her if she would take our dogs if we die.
Okay.
So she's up there saying, oh, hi.
I'll be out tonight.
This is you. Okay.
Why do we have?
No.
Thank you.
Never.
Oh, I have the wrong. Why do we have this?
I don't know why, but I think I said it within the view. I had to say the comments. But it's been like.
Are you giving the presentation?
This is supposed to be the nine sixteen council agenda. I got some fits. It doesn't matter. It's just not a good clock.
Mr. Pethrich?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snaveley?
Here. All right, at this time, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to approval of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add a new number nine, which is our executive session, which we were unable to hold before the meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so that will become number nine, and we will go through all of our business and all of the comments, so you don't need to stick around for that. And all we're going to do is adjourn when we get done with that.
All in favor?
So, all those in favor of the amendment?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of the agenda as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move now to public participation, and I have the honor of reading a proclamation. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty five marks the two hundred and thirty eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it's fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this enduring document and its anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas the Constitution of the United States is the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and the rule of law in a republic dedicated to justice and freedom, and whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating the week of September seventeen through twenty three as Constitution Week, and whereas it is both the privilege and the duty of the American people to commemorate this anniversary with appropriate ceremonies and educational activities fostering appreciation for the rights and responsibilities of citizenship, now therefore I, William B. Snaveley, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the weeks September seventeen through twenty three, twenty twenty five, as Constitution Week in the City of Oxford, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution, reflect on the privilege of being American, and reaffirm the ideals established by the framers in seventeen eighty seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us under this founding document. I hope you all listen carefully to that proclamation because to me, it's very meaningful. And we have someone to receive it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, would you like to say a couple more?
Yes, yes. Mayor Snaveley and the City Council, my name is Joe Malakot. I am the Regent or President of the Oxford Caroline Scott Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and for nearly a hundred and ten years, our chapter has been meeting in the north parlor of what is now the Oxford Community Art Center, and we thank you for this opportunity to proclaim tomorrow as the whole week for Constitution Week and tomorrow Constitution Day. It is truly an honor to be able to partner with you to proclaim this and to promote the patriotism, which is one of the missions of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And with me is Allison Haskins, who is our registrar, and I, without her, we couldn't operate. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. on the twenty twenty five levy. So please introduce yourselves.
All right, hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Jennifer Heston Mullins, and I am speaking to you this evening as a citizen of Oxford, a representative of age-friendly Oxford, and the President of the Butler County ESP Advisory Council. I'm also a licensed social worker who's worked with older adults and their families for over thirty years, and I serve as the Associate Director of Research for Miami University's Scripps Gerontology Center. With me this evening is Emily Lickte, Executive Director of Oxford Seniors and also a licensed social worker with aging practice experience. Emily also serves on the ESP Advisory Council. We're here to share information with you tonight about the Butler County Services Senior Services Levy and its vital importance to our community. So thank you for your time, and thank you for those that have joined us this evening as well. I'm going to start by sharing Susan's story. So on October thirty first, twenty twenty two, Susan's life changed forever. That was the day she had major spinal surgery and woke up not being able to feel her lower body. She was told she was paraplegic. Through her tireless work and determination, along with support from the Butler County Elderly Services Program, or as we call it ESP, Susan is more independent than she ever thought she could be again. So she was a widow, lived alone in a single-story, four-bedroom home in Trenton, and she said, I was scared to go home from the hospital. I absolutely was flat-out terrified. A hospital social worker mentioned that ESP might be able to help, and she said, the minute I knew there were many things that I would need help with, I was making lists and phone calls, and one was to ESP. When she made that call, her care manager Hannah developed a personalized care plan, and Susan's road to recovery truly began. ESP provided an emergency response system, which she wears every day and has helped her through two falls since she came home from the hospital. They built a thirty-foot wooden ramp for her that replaced a very costly rented ramp that she started out using, and it allows her to be able to enter her home with her wheelchair. They also provided medical transportation. She said, I had a lot of transportation in the beginning, wound care appointments, physical therapy sessions, and countless doctor visits. She remembers it was because of all those visits then that she gained strength and is now able to drive on her own. With that extensive support network that she had, which were grandchildren, adult children, many friends, she still felt like a burden. She said, I didn't want my children to be off work at all those times to help me. And with ESP, they can go to work every day, and they're happy to know that I have resources other than just our family. She's a nurse by trade and an enthusiastic community theater seamstress, and she's never helped, ever had problems helping others, but she said accepting help was a little bit different for her. To let someone into my circle, especially a stranger, she said, was very difficult, and I don't like to be dependent on anyone else. But Hannah made me feel comfortable, my counselor, and she's been a godsend. And Hannah also felt the same way. She's come a long way. She's really been inspirational, and she's worked really, really hard. So this fall, the Senior Services Levy is on the ballot in Butler County, so we want to share some information with you about that and its importance. And this levy provides the majority of funds that allow Butler County ESP to help thousands of older adults stay at home. Susan said that she's historically voted in favor of the levy, even though she didn't know she would need it someday, and she was so glad that she did. She said, when you wake up from a devastating event and don't know where to turn, this is a place to turn, so please say yes. Couple more things here. Certainly, as we age, most of us want to stay in our own homes and in our communities. This is very commonly known. Home often means independence, privacy, dignity, and connection to loved ones. In-home care is much cheaper than a nursing home, and it's still beyond the means, though, of many people because private pay to pay for care at home can be extremely expensive. That's where the Butler County Senior Services Levy helps. It's the primary funding source for the ESP programs, and through services such as home-delivered meals, homemaking help, and transportation, ESP makes it possible for more than four thousand seniors in Butler County to remain in their homes. ESP saves taxpayers money and keeps people off Medicaid by preventing costly and unnecessary nursing home placements. It costs taxpayers four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for ESP care versus eight thousand dollars a month for Medicaid nursing home care. It's a safety net for people who are not eligible for other community programs but who also can't afford that private care. And ESP doesn't just support older adults. That's a very important point. It helps family caregivers who are providing care and support for their parents, their grandparents, their aunts, their uncles, sometimes siblings, and other family members, and sometimes neighbors and friends. And they're often juggling jobs and child-rearing responsibilities as well. So ESP helps working caregivers stay working and productive in impacting their own families and the employers and businesses that rely on those caregivers. Couple of facts. The Butler County Senior Services Levy has been in place for thirty years, since nineteen ninety-six, and similar levies exist in Claremont, Clinton, Hamilton, and Warren Counties. In fact, the very first dedicated senior service levy in Ohio was passed in Claremont County in nineteen eighty-two. It's a really great story about a church secretary, retired church secretary. I can't have time to tell it, but hit me up later. It's a good story. Ohio law requires that senior service levies must be renewed by voters at least every five years, and over the years, Butler County voters have shown strong support for the levy. We thank them for their understanding of this important issue. The reason we're speaking to you tonight is to let you and the public know that the current levy expires this year, twenty twenty five. In November, voters will be asked to approve Issue One, which is a senior services levy that includes renewal of the existing one-point-three-mill levy and a point-seven-mill increase. It's been twenty years since the last levy increase, and in that time, there's also been an increase in the number of older adults, as many of us are aware. This new levy will generate twenty point, twenty-point-two million per year and cost homeowners fifty dollars per one-hundred-thousand dollars in property value annually. This is less than two percent of the average property tax bill, about four dollars per month to ensure that critical services continue and allow older adults to remain in their homes and communities. It's a good value for taxpayers again because it provides that service that would be much more expensive through nursing home care. This is the very important point. If the levy fails, ESP ends. There's no continuation funding after that point. So very important for everyone to understand that. And I'm going to let Emily here go on.
So, hi. As Jennifer said, I'm Emily Lickte. I'm the Executive Director at Oxford Seniors, and as the Executive Director of Oxford Seniors, I can testify that people call us every day, multiple times a day, looking for help, the kind of help that ESP provides. In the past twenty years, the Butler County's population, sixty-plus population, has grown seventy-nine percent, and we have also had a significant increase in the eighty-five-plus age group, which are typically the people who need the most support to stay in their homes. So we've had a fifty percent increase in the clients served in Butler County, but we've managed to keep the cost per client very, very low. And we've also had a significant decrease in federal funding. When people contact Oxford Seniors looking for help, it might be an older adult who is looking to age in their home. It might be a spouse who is becoming overwhelmed with caretaking duties, and it's often an adult child who is looking to balance caring for their parent, working, caring for themselves, and caring for their children. And we also often have people who contact us because they live in Oxford and they want to move their parents here, and what kind of help is there? And many times, the answer to that question is elderly services program. So in order to be eligible for ESP, you have to be a Butler County resident, you have to be sixty or older, you have specific care and health needs. Some clients, depending on ability, are required to pay a cost share of the services that they are getting, and we also always check to see if they are eligible for those services through anything else, so insurance, benefits, veteran benefits, Medicaid, all those things. Now, while Oxford Seniors doesn't provide all of these, the elderly services program does provide care management, home-delivered meals, home care assistance, transportation, adult day services, home safety modifications, emergency response systems, which is like the Med Alert button, and respite for caregivers, and also with the uplift program, behavioral health services. So a typical recipient of an ESP support is a seventy-six-year-old woman with disabilities and multiple chronic health issues. They live alone, they need help with bathing, cooking, cleaning, dressing, shopping, they live on a fixed income, and they've been in and out of the hospital and are at risk for a nursing home placement. They often have a family caregiver, but that caregiver has children and a full-time job. Recently, Scripps did a survey, a review of the program, and it showed that all the clients currently enrolled on the program that they surveyed have a very high level of need. Ninety-three percent have limitations in two or more activities of daily living, so dressing, caring for themselves. Ninety-eight-point-six percent have difficulty transferring from bed to chair. Eighty percent need assistance with bathing, and more than half need assistance getting to the toilet. One in five of the current ESP clients have an income at or below one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars a month, and one in ten have a diagnosis of Alzheimer's or another form of dementia. So ESP serves our friends, our families, our neighbors of modest means. These are people who want to be independent but need help and do not qualify for any other program to provide this support. At Oxford Seniors, the ESP funds allow us to provide rides to out-of-town doctor appointments for retired community members who can't drive any longer because of strokes or loss of vision. It provides, we are able to provide home-delivered meals to a mother and daughter who not only are food insecure and need that daily hot meal, they also need someone to check on them every day. ESP also allows us to provide independent living assistance to a client who is a wheelchair user, and with that time, we were able to help them to apply for a Habitat for Humanity grant to receive home repairs, new windows, new doors. We are also able to provide support, home-delivered meals, and independent living assistance to a client who is in hospice, allowing them to work with us to prepare their, the details of their life for the end of their life. So just like the rest of our state, the county, the country, our program, our population is aging, and as these population ages, they need the limited ESP funds, and they can only stretch so far. Right now, ESP has moved to a managed enrollment criteria, where the criteria of what you need to satisfy in order to receive these funds has been raised much, much higher. And I can share with you that we recently were trying to enroll a community member who lives in Section Eight housing, who is a wheelchair user and has a disability that makes it impossible for them to make their own meals and clean their own house. And we were trying to enroll them in the elderly services program, and the criteria is now so high that he was not eligible for the program. And that's why we strongly recommend that people vote yes on this and vote yes for an increase. So ESP is a community partnership. Council on Aging of Southwestern Ohio administers the program through a contract with Butler County Commissioners. Lifespan Community First Solutions, which is a Butler County nonprofit, contracts with COA, Council on Aging, to provide intake and care management. A volunteer community group, which Jennifer and I are part of, Butler County Elderly Services Advisory Council, serves as community advisors. Council on Aging then contracts with provider agencies like Oxford Seniors to deliver services. Family caregivers provide support where they are able, and voters help make the program possible. And I like to tell people that elderly services levy like this is an amazing way to keep tax dollars local, supporting local people, and employing local people to do that work. So it's an amazing way to make sure that your tax dollars are directly supporting your friends, your neighbors, and your family.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it very much. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you and good luck on your levy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, at this time, we would, anyone who would like to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be your opportunity. So you can come up and talk to us, and we will give you five minutes. Give us your name and where you live, and we would be glad to hear from you.
Hi, Mark.
Good. My name is Mark Wardman. I live at forty-three eighty-five Harris Road in Oxford, or just outside Oxford. I'm here today to, on behalf of Three Valley Conservation Trust, to report on the new boardwalk, a new phase of the boardwalk, which is located, connected to the Oats Trail system. In addition to the update, I wanted to thank people, thank the city in particular, and also offer an invitation. In twenty twenty-three, we began a project to build a boardwalk that would connect people to the stream. We worked through twenty twenty-three, and by the end of twenty twenty-three, we had a boardwalk that, that allowed people to visit Four Mile Creek, one of our, one of our important sites to visit. The, the boardwalk itself was completely ADA compliant. We wanted to make sure there was access for everyone regardless of mobility. There are benches about every hundred and fifty feet, which is an ADA recommendation for it. It's smooth, it's got handrails. It's, it's really quite a great, great place. The, the Oats Trail was paved about that time, and we did connect directly to it with a, with an ADA compliant connection, just a, just a little push-up, and you're onto the boardwalk. We, we were fortunate in twenty twenty-four to get some further funding. We asked the city if we could, again, cross some of their property and connect up to the Oats Trail in another location, creating a loop instead of just going in and then back out. Could we actually have a loop? And they said yes, and that was completed in twenty twenty-four. There was one thing missing, though, and in twenty twenty-four, I came to the city council and asked if it would be okay, asked permission, could we pay for and build a parking area right next to the, the entrance? And the answer was, well, there's going to be a dog park built there, and maybe there's a better place. Would we consider some other place? And we did. The other place is connected to Barkham Park. It's connected right off of the, the, the parking area there. We got funding to build a parking area, and within weeks, it was built. And then amazingly, I walked out there one morning, and a few weeks later, and someone had painted handicap-accessible lines on it and put up signs. Thank you very much, City of Oxford. That was just one of the many areas of partnership that we had. So now the site is located off the, in a corner of the parking area, and, and we had a parking lot. We began building in middle April, and by about April fifteenth, we were partway to the stream. By April twenty-fourth, we had actually gotten to the stream with another accessible overlook to view it. And that's what it kind of looks like. It's really, to me, it's the best seat in town, is to sit there on that bench. Late April, we began connecting this particular boardwalk with the main boardwalk. That was going to be about four hundred feet of boardwalk, and by June third, we had made the connection for it, and, and we're really pleased that today there is a winding boardwalk with benches about every hundred and fifty feet, handrails at the appropriate ADA compliant level. And we have this beautiful site, again, it's the best spot in town, right off the dog park, parking area. Well, not to be done, City of Oxford and Three Valley agreed that having a place to put bike there to keep bikes off the boardwalk. There are some people sometimes who want to ride their bikes on the boardwalk. Stupid's not a nice word, I guess, but it would be a silly thing to do because it's not really safe. So a bike rack was put up and put in by City of Oxford, and, and that's where we have, that's what we have today. The full range of the boardwalks in what we call Ruder Preserve is shown here in the yellow lines. The shaded yellow part is the land that is owned by Three Valley Conservation Trust, and as you can see, there are three access points to, to the Oats Trail, all traversing City of Oxford property, which we have a legal lease to something on that. So that's the update, and the thank you goes to a lot of people. This was made, it's not just the money, it's a lot of people did some work. We had to manage funds. It was, and we had to clear the land and clear the, the invasive species. There are a lot of people, put a lot of effort into it. And in particular, I'm coming here tonight to thank the City of Oxford. I, I can't say enough how the staff from, at every level, my contact with the staff has been nothing but, this is a, this is a can-do sort of staff. They, they were thoughtful and made suggestions and made it happen, and it was really, really great. So thank you. I haven't really mentioned everybody's name, but it was, so many people really have done that.
Thank you, Mark. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. And we're going to have a ribbon-cutting opening of that on October twelfth, and so you're all definitely invited for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, we don't norm, we don't have a Q and A, but I did want to comment that this is a marvelous project that Mark just described for us, and it is definitely a treasure to the community, and I think that Mark deserves a lot of credit, as well as the people who worked with him, including Tom Farmer and Steve Nimmis and other people that he would grab along the way and who helped just all volunteer effort to build that for our community. So I do think you deserve another round of applause. We have another comment.
Glenn Ellerby, one fifty-eight Silverleaf Drive. First off, I'm just going to act as myself right now and say thank you to the City of Oxford for addressing concerns that the members of Silverleaf Meadows had about the fifth phase of the Oats Trail, and now I'm about to put my hat on for representing the Oxford Chamber of Commerce. One of the things that I love about this city is its collaborative nature with the residents, the businesses, and the other entities that we have in town. The reason why I'm here is there was a concern when the words mandate came out regarding recycling, especially for businesses. So they activated me to come here and understand what you guys were discussing during your work session. I am happy to realize that was just one option of several, and that it seems like the general sentiment was to go towards a more collaborative and tiered approach to doing business recycling in Oxford. I can go back and report to the chamber that, you know, Oxford is going to talk to the businesses and tap a couple of volunteers to do some of those things, so that makes this speech a whole lot easier to say. But I do have some recommendations that I now want to put on to the official city council record, and that is, I do- council record, and that is, I do hope that you guys consider some incentives for the businesses. I do think that would go a long way in getting more buy-in faster and with higher fidelity than just approaching them and saying, we want to do this thing. Also, hopefully, you provide them the outcome that you're looking for. So if you say, we're just trying to increase the amount and fidelity of the recycling we have in Oxford, we know that businesses have a vested interest because most of them are already doing that. Leanne in the work session already said that she teaches people how to break down boxes. Many business owners, owners do that, and they are quite mindful of environmental concerns. So I just hope that when you go and reach out to the businesses, you say, this is our, our outcome that we're desiring, and here's how we want to approach it, how could you help us get there? And those types of things are what I believe, everybody that looks at Oxford that doesn't live in Oxford, so potential investors, potential people that want to live here, other business interests, think about those types of things where Oxford is a collaborative entity, and they say, you know, they're willing to work with the businesses. I want, I want to start my business here. So those are the kinds of things that I'm happy to see that it didn't go a particular direction, it went a very other, very positive direction, and I'm happy that I'm able to go back to the chamber and say that, be on the lookout for the city tapping individual, or I'm sorry, businesses for the opportunity to share in that pilot, or not a pilot, tiered approach. So thanks again.
Thanks, Glenn. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight? Peggy? I don't really know everybody's first name in Oxford. I just happened to know.
Almost everybody.
That's right. And I'm still Peggy Branstad, and I still live in eighteen Meadow Circle. I've come to invite you to two upcoming events. Invite everybody. The first one is something called Sunday, and it's Sunday, and it's the autumn, up, fall equinox. And it used to be apparently celebrated fairly widely, and then it fell kind of along the side, and they're trying to rejuvenate it. There aren't any local events, but the Cincinnati Public Radio Station is holding a big event in their new building. So if you haven't seen it, Sunday's a good excuse to go down and see their open house. But the open house that I really want you to come see was, is happening the first weekend in October, which is the third, fourth, and fifth, although we're, we're really only doing anything here on the fourth and fifth, but this is the thirtieth anniversary of the ACES National Solar Tour. ACES stands for the American Solar Energy Society. I think I might have been to one of those very first, because one of my very first environmental events was an ACES tour of the Ecology Center at Miami University, and I think it must have been about thirty years ago, so maybe it was one of the first ones. But anyway, we have eight sites. People who have solar panels, you know, I can't come and talk without talking about solar panels. And they're going to make time available for people to come and visit, and ask them questions, and look at their solar panels, and hopefully look at their electric bill. When you look at mine, mine at the moment has ninety-five dollars credit that I'm going to be able to use all winter, so that I don't really have to pay an electric bill. Haven't for three years. I can show you how to do it. So we'll be posting some information. You'll be able to visit a couple of your colleagues who have volunteered for my effort. They're, those are the ones with the broken arms and the slings. But we're going to have a number of places, we're going to get it in the Oxford Free Press, and we hope you'll come and look around because there's some real opportunities. It seems like a strange time, I know, to think about solar energy because we've, you know, we're losing the credits, but it makes so much sense economically, that the economics of it are going to drive this project whether we have incentives or not. But of course, I'm going to encourage you again to think about city incentives, even small ones, for people who put solar up on their house, and help us reach our goal of zero carbon emissions.
Thank you, Peggy. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council? Going once, going twice? Okay, thank you very much. We're really glad that you all came. We'll move then to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved, and we'll move to resolutions. And Heather, you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to amend an existing agreement with AECOM Technical Service Incorporated for the development of construction plans and specifications for an Amtrak rail station platform.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members of council. We've been spending significant amounts of time on three projects in the area of Chestnut and South Main Street. One is the Oats Trail Phase Five, which is being constructed to the south of the city maintenance facility in Collins Run. They have made significant progress in clearing for the trail and getting culverts in place, and major parts for the bridge have been ordered and are expected to be here on, on schedule and, and on budget. Chestnut Fields Multimodal Facility is nearing completion. That's Butler County's Regional Transit Authority's multimodal facility, and that is going to provide a waiting room for this proposed Amtrak rail platform that we're talking about tonight. We started that project back in 2021, so it's, it's been a slow goat with our engineering efforts so far. We proceeded with the contract in 2021 with some assumptions, the main one being that we would be able to acquire Nelson Morrow Building. Ultimately, we were not able to acquire that. Talawanda did not desire to sell that to us, and so we are having to adapt and pivot and come up with a new plan. So our current plan is to work at the southern end of the SDS Pizza Site and obtain an easement there, and we will have a direct connection from the multimodal RTA facility over to the rail platform. Unfortunately, that will mean there's some extra costs involved. Extra costs for design of that area, as well as Amtrak and CSX have very demanding and specific requirements for their design that far exceed any city or state regulation that we typically follow. There will be additional environmental costs and hydrogeotechnical costs, and also there'll be some retaining walls involved with the new design. So we're asking you to amend the contract that we have with AECOM to accommodate these costs. Initially, the city council approves $250,000 for the design. To date, we've spent approximately $183,000. The additional costs are expected to cost $133,000 approximately. We're asking for a 10% contingency of that amount of approximately $13,000. So we're asking you to amend the not-to-exceed contract amount for this project to $396,551.51. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? So for all of those who ask the question of me on a regular basis, is that Amtrak thing still coming? Yes, we're still working on it. I would then entertain any comments or questions from council. Yeah.
You want to go first?
Sure.
Go, Jason.
Okay. I was wondering when talks stopped over the Nelson Morrow Building, if there's any chance of reviving that at this point?
They, they, the administration gave us a definitive no.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
David?
So I, you know, A, I just want to thank my fellow counselors. We had a kind of gut check conversation, was it last meeting? And, and, you know, I could sense that with the price tag going up, the possibility of cold feet, but I was really affirmed that council was willing to see something through that we've been talking about for so long. And I think in the future, people will look back and they won't have, they won't quibble over the extra money we spent if it achieves a goal we've been talking about for decades. And much as, like, I was super frustrated about the Nelson Morrow Building and all of that, I think the designs start to communicate what will be a, as good an experience as we can have, given working, needing to work around the Nelson Morrow Building. I do just, unlike, at, at this point, we're spending so much money on this that think about anything extra, but we do have an intersection there at South Main and, and Chestnut that doesn't have a pedestrian connection on the side that happens to have the multimodal facility. There's, there are crosswalks on three sides, but not on the side that a, a person wanting to walk or bike from campus would need to go like across and over and over. And I know things are not lined up real well, but I would hope that if we're going to be doing all of this, that we figure out how to make sure that that intersection is fully complete on all four legs, particularly since that's where people are going to be trying to access the facility. I don't see a part of the design that's beyond the scope of this, but it's, it's our right of way. So I just hope we look at that.
From memory, I know we talked about this years ago, and I believe the answer to that is the minimum distance from the railroad to the proposed east leg crosswalk did not meet the standard.
Yeah, I think it's just more about the intersection completeness, but if we could just go back to that, since we're going to be doing a lot of concrete work and stuff in there, we have signals, it's just, we may not have a pedestrian head at that location. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
A resolution of the city council subcommittee recommending the dispersment of community assistance funding in the 2026 proposed budget.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug?
Yep. So on Monday, September the eighth, the Community Assistance Committee met to review applications for the Community Assistance Program. This committee is made up of three members of council who were appointed on August the fifth, 2025. The program awards grant funds from the city general fund to local nonprofits that serve the Oxford community. There were $184,500 in funding requests, but only $161,000 is budgeted to be awarded in 2026. So after a view of the applications, the organizations and amounts listed in Exhibit A are recommended for funding by the committee, and then if approved, these grant amounts will be included in the city manager's 2026 operating budget.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you very much. Counselors? Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to the third.
A resolution authorizing a grant to the Oxford Vineyard Church in the amount of $70,000 for the operation of an emergency cold shelter.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Doug?
Yes, so city staff recommends approval of this legislation, which will authorize funding for the Oxford Vineyard Church to operate an emergency cold shelter for unhoused individuals in Oxford during the winter season from December the first, 2025, through February twenty-eighth, 2026. Funds will be granted in early October to allow time for space build-out preparations. For the past five years, as you know, Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services, TOPS, has operated the community's cold shelter program. On May eighth, 2025, TOPS announced it would no longer be able to provide this service. Following this, city staff convened community partners, including members of the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing Board and local faith communities, to explore alternatives. Oxford Vineyard Church, as chair of the Faith Collaboration, has submitted a program proposal and budget, which is included as Exhibit A. They have agreed to serve as the primary fiscal agent and operating entity for the shelter during the 2025-2026 winter season. The proposed program will provide 24/7 shelter services during the coldest months of the year, and will be staffed by two contracted coordinators with support from trained volunteers. Services will include overnight accommodations, meals, and connection to social services resources. The program will serve adults experiencing homelessness, and when necessary, make arrangements for families with children through donated housing at area hotels. So the City of Oxford will enter into a grant funding agreement with Oxford Vineyard Church, as described in Exhibit B. And then under this agreement, Oxford Vineyard will hire contractors and recruit managed volunteers, manage expenditures, and maintain all receipts, provide a final program report detailing the number of individuals served, basic demographics, length of stay, and services provided. Any unused funds will be returned to the city no later than March thirty-first, 2026. So funding will be provided from the interest earned on the American Rescue Plan funds. The requested amount is $70,000, which represents the full cost of shelter operations, not covered by in-kind contributions from churches, TOPS, and other community partners. This program represents a collaborative effort between the city, faith-based organizations, nonprofits, and volunteers to provide life-saving services. This program also builds connection to supportive services aimed at addressing long-term housing stability. So staff recommends approval of this resolution authorizing funding for Oxford Vineyard Church to operate the emergency cold shelter from December first, 2025, through February twenty-eighth, 2026, with funds being granted in early October, 2025.
Super. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? While he's coming up, I want to especially recognize OSH, the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing, who have been working so hard on this, and it's something that every citizen of Oxford area, if you want to, you can become involved in it, and you can help with it. Hi.
Amen. John Baylor, one thirty-one Prevalent Drive. I'd like to strongly encourage the city council to pass this resolution that helps to meet the needs of our neighbors with the greatest need during the coldest months of winter. As noted, this is a collaboration between many faith communities in the, the city, and will involve volunteers from throughout our community during this, this very cold winter month. A warming center during bitter winter months is evidence of a community that cares, and I hope you will support that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Ann.
Good evening, Bill. Mayor.
That's okay. It's spelled two.
I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles, and I'm a member of the board of the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing. I've participated in the group of representatives of seven different faith communities who have met for several months to plan operation of the cold shelter in Oxford this year. And as you're beginning to hear, other members of that planning group are here and will speak, and I personally think it's important for you to meet some of the people who've been involved in this process over the last few months and are taking on this project. Our vision is for sheltering this winter, but also the possibility of expanding to year-round sheltering, but at, at the least, developing a model that is sustainable in Oxford. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution, and the city manager's office, Jessica in particular, prepared a very detailed report, so I won't repeat those details. But I did want to add several points by way of context. One, the amount requested is significantly higher than city support in previous years. I think it makes sense that it comes from the interest earned from ARPA funds that have not yet been expended. Those funds were initially awarded to serve the population that this cold shelter will be serving. This is, as, as John said and suggested, this is a collaborative effort between the city and community, so there are considerable in-kind contributions from churches, and OSH is prepared to fundraise to supplement available funds. We can also, of course, seek grant support from local foundations. I want to note that half of the $70,000 would go to hire professionally qualified staff who will assure the security of our guests, volunteers, and staff. Staff will also assist with case management, providing access to social Staff will also assist with case management, providing access to social services that will complement meeting physical and hygiene needs. Sheltering is meant to be a step on the path to housing stability. Second, the model of congregate sheltering, that is everyone together in one space rather than individual hotel rooms, is not the only good model, but is consistent with best practices, and we've been looking to a guide identified by the National Alliance to End Homelessness for best practices in interim emergency sheltering, and that's informed a lot of our decisions so far. Third, recently, several coalitions have formed in the Oxford area to address unmet needs because safety nets are disappearing with changing priorities in state and federal government decision-making. And of course, as you've said and shown, the city is an important participant in these coalitions, and recognizing the need for local safety nets is welcome. And then finally, I wasn't here when it was announced that you were able to appoint me to the Housing Advisory Commission, and I thank you for that appointment. It took me a while to step up, but I did it. And I went to the first meeting, and they said, gee, Ann, wouldn't you love to chair this? And I said, sure, I know when to say yes. So I'll be working with Jessica to set agendas for our meetings this year, and I was thrilled with the agenda of that first meeting. The top three goals for affordable housing for the city for the year were discussed, namely, RFPs for development of the 47 acres owned by the city, housing stabilization through prevention of eviction and promotion of tenants' rights, and pursuing bringing permanent supportive housing to Oxford. Jessica identified an additional priority, but really only has the time to research one, got it, topic per year, and that is the need for long-term emergency shelter. And so our group believes that we can move from, or we would like to try to move from this emergency cold shelter planning to contribute to planning for long-term sheltering in Oxford. And I have some flyers with QR codes if anybody wants to become involved in the group. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Thank you to OSH for all the help that they've been providing. Hi, Rick. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Rick Bailey, 192 Stone Creek, and far be it from me to try to add anything to the eloquence of Ann's presentation. But I do want to recognize the amount of effort from the city, from council, the attendance at meetings, the dialogue back and forth, and the evidence of caring to make Oxford a better place are all very, very reassuring. So thank you very much, and please support the request.
Thank you, Rick. Are we done? Thank you all very much for speaking, and we appreciate it very much. Are there comments or questions from council?
I have a comment. I was so excited to see the volunteers sign up, and I tried to scan the QR code, and it wouldn't work, at least for my phone, I have an iPhone. But yeah, I would love, I don't know if y'all want to double-check that QR code, but this, this whole project is really the best example of humanity, and how exactly, like you said, Rick, like how reassuring in a time when a lot of us feel very nervous about things. And so it's a really beautiful thing, and thank you so much for all the effort, and ongoing effort to expand from here so that we can make sure housing is provided for everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
I just want to second what Bill said. I mean, the months and hours that, that the OSH Committee has put into pulling this together, working with Jessica, who's not here tonight, the faith community who has stepped up, you know, the Vineyard is going to provide space, many of the other churches are going to provide food, I'm sure they're all going to provide volunteers and supervision. It's a really well-thought-out plan. We're not going into this, you know, with our eyes shut. Everybody has some idea how it's going to go. I think it's going to go really well, so, you know, kudos to everybody who's had a hand in this.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate everyone for their hard work. I fully support this. I think, as Counselor Raghu said, in a time when it just feels like things are falling apart, when you look to the local level and see how people can collaborate to get things done, it's really encouraging and very heartwarming. I've often asked people, when people talk about caring for the unhoused in our community, they often express concern about safety, and everyone has a right to ask questions about safety. But I also ask them in return, as we wonder whether we can be safe around them, right, the them, we should also ask ourselves if they can be safe around us.
Yeah.
Are we a community where people who are unhoused can be safe? And I think this demonstrates that the answer is yes. And I think when we really think about it, many of us are just a couple crises away, if not one, from being home insecure ourselves. So I think thinking about how we would want to be treated if we were in that unfortunate situation is really important, and I can see that you've all done that, so thank you, and to staff as well.
Jason?
I couldn't possibly say it better than that, just echo those sentiments completely, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I mean, it's, it, beautiful was the adjective that came to mind, because this is a community that saw a need, and it's not a simple thing to solve. We've been wrestling this for a variety of years. Luckily, we had some funding through COVID to get us started, but we very easily could have stopped after having started. And so I, I want to thank all those people who have been dogged about this issue. You know, there are a lot of things I'm dogged about. The housing is, is one, like, you know, this wasn't, housing was not even really part of the conversation 10 years ago on council. It was just not really a municipal, it was something that we just didn't concern ourselves with, and it's, and you know, it's Counselor Raghu, and Counselor Bracken, and everybody who just said, no, this is, this is something we need to focus on. OSH, which is a group that didn't even exist before, and now meets regularly, and, and staff to learn the vocabulary of this, and, and, you know, I think that, I, I recognize that if I'm the City Manager, for example, I know that, like, people look to the city to take care of all the problems, and we can't take care of all the problems. Like, we just don't have the resources, the staffing resources, but we can be a really great partner if there are other people who will partner with us. And this is one of these cases where it's just like such a beautiful partnership that will make this sustainable. We're a key partner, but not the only one, and, and I think when we partner like that, we can do so much in our community. So I want to thank all of you guys who have been dogging on this for years, because it's, here we are.
Thank you very much, and, did I get everybody? I think I did. I just want to say that attending an OSH meeting is one of the more heartwarming, and one of the things that I know that Jason and Mike both attend as well, that it just makes you really proud to be an Oxfordian. And I want to thank all the members of OSH who are here today. You make a difference, and I hope that this will be as successful as we hope it will, and I believe it will. So are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move then to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3783, supplemental budget ordinance number six, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, thank you very much. Heidi?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have brought forth tonight a supplemental appropriation to cover the cost of the grant that we just passed, to provide to the Oxford Vineyard Church a grant of $70,000 for the cold shelter, the emergency cold shelter. ARPA earned interest will be the source of funding. I have also included an appropriation for the Capital Improvement Fund in the amount of $146,500 for the Amtrak passenger platform design. Additional funding is needed, the design modifications for the resolution, again, that we just passed to amend the contract. So the staff report was very vague, we kind of threw it in last minute, so I apologize, but these funds will come from the Capital Improvement Fund balance.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? This is a first reading, so we'll have an opportunity to talk about it again at our next meeting and vote on it. Okay, we'll have second reading.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1897 and dissolving the Student Community Relations Commission.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, and we have...
Yeah, I've got nothing to add to the report that was given at the last meeting, unless you have questions for us.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this? Come on up.
Tariq Farkson, 211 North College. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Tariq Farkson, and I am the Secretary of Community Engagement for Miami University Associated Student Government. First, I would like to thank you all for the work you do to keep Oxford a thriving community. I'm especially grateful for the opportunity to begin my role this week by speaking with you tonight, and I look forward to our continued partnership and strengthening the relationship between Miami students and the Oxford community. I'd like to briefly share my reflections on the decision to dissolve the SCRC. While there is certainly a sense of sadness in seeing this, the conclusion of a longstanding space for dialogue, I also recognize that the body has not operated in the way that is, was intended to do so, if for quite some time. Still, it represented an important idea, and as was mentioned in the staff report, the relationship between the City of Oxford and the university has greatly strengthened in the previous years, and I believe that it still represents an important idea, that collaboration between students, residents, and city administrators and leadership matters, and I believe that that idea should carry forward. Moments of transition, of transition often open the door to new possibilities, and on behalf of ASG, we are both hopeful and expectant that another forum will emerge where students, residents, and the city leaders can continue this important work together in a way that is productive, consistent, and impactful. So we at ASG and at the university stand ready to cooperate fully in shaping whatever comes next, and to ensure that students remain active, constructive partners in Oxford civic life, and we're excited to engage in that process promptly and thoughtfully. And I just wanted to, once again, say thank you for your commitment to collaboration, and I look forward to building on this relationship in the months ahead.
Thank you very much, and you can come back anytime. Is there anyone else who would like to address the resolution, the ordinance, excuse me? Okay, call the roll. Oh, council, sorry. Any more comments? Yeah?
Well said. That was spot on. We need to keep communications up one way or another.
Yeah, we do.
I throw out last time, if we had some state of the city to them, or state of the university to us from the associated government, at least once a year, I think that would be a great start. Try out.
Yeah, I just want to build on what Counselor Bracken says. Like, I'm ready to vote for this, because it's, it's a board that's struggled, and its, its time has come and gone, but I think the answers that are in the staff report are not quite enough. Like, I think regular meetings of high-level people and encouraging students to get on boards is not exactly the engagement that I think you're talking about. So I think this idea of, like, thematic, either a state of the city, or thematic roundtable events that have city representatives, student representatives around particular issues, we've done it periodically over things like public safety, but it's kind of hit or miss. But I think having a few of these a year and a regular thing, so I hope that we could, you know, step up to really the commitment to, like, what would that engagement look like on a regular, so students, you know, so would, students would know if they had an issue where they could go to have their voices heard. And I think the answer's not 100% in this resolution, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to vote for it, but I hope we think of what that is.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? You may call the roll.
Mr. Pritheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number two.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Oxford, Ohio, for approximately 18 acres of land, generally located at 1701 Lake Forest Drive, from multifamily residential district to single and two-family residential district.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. No changes from the first reading. I do want to report that we did follow up on one of the council's discussion items, which was to ask if there was interest in broadening the rezoning area to the full property. And after discussing with the, their agent, the engineer, and the owner, they respectfully commented that they would not like to expand that, but we did have the meeting.
Okay.
And that would be a separate process, and I think there may be interest in the future. If their development goes well, they may be willing to expand that, but at this point they're not. So that was all the additional information that I have, no other, no changes to the rezoning request, and this is related to the second one as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Arnalis, and I am a city resident. I want to suggest that the City Council...
And you live roughly where?
Oh, on South Locust Street.
Thank you.
Sure. I want to suggest that the City Council set aside the vote and spend time reconsidering the change in zoning at the location presently called Lake Forest Cove. And if a change is decided for this location, then in recognition of more transparency in our governance model, I recommend that the steering committee members of the comprehensive plan or other interested citizens be invited to discuss this change by encouraging more public participation in this type of change, because after all, it was the steering committee of community members, along with city staff and commissions, who recommended the present multifamily residential R4 zoning. I want to draw attention to the housing needs assessment that is also described in the comprehensive plan, and what is particularly concerning is the critical designation under priority housing at or below 50% of the area median income range, the AMI. However, at recent council meetings, two areas identified for housing development are in the range of 60% to 80% AMI, and this still leaves a growing gap and a lack of housing options for those earning less. I believe there needs to be more attention placed on the middle AMI range that the present zoning allows for. For example, people who are not either interested in homeownership, or who are individuals not quite ready financially to purchase homes, need someplace to live today. While I see the importance of housing development of single and two-family residential builds, there is clearly a growing need for multifamily residential development. I would like to see the city think creatively in the future about planning and supporting, excuse me, mixed use and even multi-generational housing development. This will require us to seek developers who are willing to invest in this type of construction, and as a friend recently suggested to me, the middle has no place to go. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Are you ready to vote?
I'm in support of it. I don't agree with downzoning, but I think here it makes a lot of sense across multiple fronts, including housing, because we might not get anything, which has been the case for 14 years, and we have two other developments that have not happened in that same area.
Yep. Okay.
I, you know, we had a conversation last time about slicing and dicing. I don't think it's necessarily great practice to, like, for developers to carve out exactly what they want and then ask for the rezoning, and not an inch more. Like, I think that, I'm not saying that we, we, we've done this with our own properties, which we have rezoned individual properties, and, and that's already kind of okay on the smaller end, but, but to slice and dice and say this part is, is, is not great zoning practice. I think that ultimately, it's not spot zoning, because I think there's benefit to the community of this zoning change, and, and I think that, you know, I mean, I think that it became R4 because it was intended to be student housing as part of a big property, and I, oh, I love to see affordable housing density out there, that's not what the market would likely produce out there. So for environmental reasons, I think downzoning's sensitive, but I think we do need to start thinking about how we approach rezonings and be careful to not just do it when applicants ask, and I think we should take a broader approach. But I think this is good for the public welfare, so.
Anyone else? I want to just say that I, while I understand the owner's decision not to ask for rezoning of the entire property, I think that that was an unwise decision, and if I were thinking about building a home in this neighborhood, that zoning all around it, being R4, would give me pause, and I don't think that I would put my money into... me pause, and I don't think that I would put my money into that neighborhood knowing that I could have student apartments all the way around me or something else.
Across the pond.
Or across, yeah, anywhere across pond. So, my message to them is, I accept your decision, but I think it was not wise. Is that a nice way to say stupid?
I had not thought about the, yeah, the marketability is...
That's a nice way, but you know, I, I wouldn't put my money into it with that, and I think that's why the whole thing about Western Knowles was about, really, is the, people are putting their hard-earned money into a property, and they don't want, you know, they, they want to have some assurance of what it's going to be like. So, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
A reluctant yes. Okay, that ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number three, which is about the same area.
An ordinance approving a preliminary subdivision named Lake Forest Cove submitted by Four Leaf Development LLC for 34 single-family residential lots to be situated on 17.947 acres currently addressed as 1701 Lake Forest Drive, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Same.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
Thank you.
Any changes?
No changes. This is the 34-lot, single-family development plat that is associated with the rezoning request that you just heard and voted on. This is the preliminary, so there would be a final that would come after this before it could be divided up and sold for development.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors? I'd be glad to hear from our planning commission.
Well, I just, like, I think this was a, this is a thoughtfully designed, this is the first use of our conservation development, you know, subset of the subdivision ordinance, and it was designed to do exactly this, which is design a subdivision carefully. Often developers come in, and it's like a blank slate, and they chop it up exactly to maximize the lots regardless of the wooded areas, regardless of the ponds, because it's, it's just cheaper to do it that way. This, they paid attention to the site, and I think this is going to be a really attractive neighborhood to live in with the pond and surrounded by woods, but it had not dawned on me, Mayor Snidely's right, like, I think if you're going to spend how many hundreds of thousands of dollars on a home, what do you get to see across the pond? Will it potentially be an apartment building? I think he's on to something, but that's beyond the scope of this. I think it's going to be high-quality, high amenity subdivision that I think people will find attractive as long as they're comfortable not knowing what will happen across the pond.
Okay. Anyone else? I do think that we have the advantage of a competent and seasoned developer who has experience with the community and will do a quality job, so I appreciate that. All right, are we ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, thank you very much, and we'll move to the last one.
An ordinance approving a conditional use for a golf simulator indoor entertainment facility located at 10 North Beach Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Same.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Sam?
Thank you again. There was some questions and I know concerns, kind of, I think it picked up maybe an old wound on a theater that didn't happen, but we did some research, and I did reach out to the applicant, Architect Scott Webb, and let him know that we'd be happy to assist his client if they ever wanted to do a, kind of a historic replica sign in the future. There'd be additional processes and steps for that because it's been gone for so long, and it, there'd be a completely different application process for that, but essentially it's outside the scope of the, of the review of what they're doing on the inside of the building. This is a conditional use for the golf simulator entertainment facility, which turned out to be a requirement for this additional process that really doesn't have that much of a nuisance impact on the surrounding property, but the way it was categorized in the zoning code, it did require this, so really, there's no changes on the request or any of the conditions or waivers, but I did want to follow up with that based on some of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors? Comments or questions?
You know, there are old wounds, but time heals wounds, and, and it's not the applicants, that's not their problem. I have a beef with other people, and I will never forget. I may try to forgive, but I'll never forget, but that is water under the bridge, and I want to thank Tyler and Jackson for their, their ongoing investments in our community. I mean, I think about what kind of town would this be like if a greater proportion of Miami students stayed behind and started businesses? Like, we have Kefania thanks to alums, and because we have Kefania, then Bodega was saved from becoming something else, and now we have Oxfama's Chicken, we have this, and so thank you for staying in town, thanks you for investing, and, and, and something like this shouldn't require conditional use, but I hope you've learned something about local government along the way, observing us. You see, we care a lot, but that, this shouldn't even require a review, but this, so it's my opportunity to say, well, thank you for taking this sore wound and turning it into something that I hope will be good, so, so thank you.
Okay, counselors, any other ones?
Yeah, I'm kind of with David. You know, I said my piece on the marquee, you know, I'll, maybe one day we'll come back, but he's right, you guys are taking on a big empty project. I will say this, get everything in writing with your landlords.
Seriously.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't just do things and say it'll be okay. Get everything written out, and that's all I will say.
That's good advice. All right, are you ready to vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, good luck to you, hope it works great. All right, let's move to remarks from city council and staff. I'll start with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. Couple things I wanted to share with you, that Rena and I had a discussion with representatives of Sopac, Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, regarding our new electric aggregation rates. Our current agreement with Energy Harbor expires with the December 2025 meter reading. We decided that the city should agree to a five-month contract price to enable the city to become part of Sopac's larger buying block, which includes the city of Cleveland and the city of Dayton, their buying block for electric power. The current Duke Energy price to compare is 10.43 cents per kilowatt hour. The city's current electric aggregation rate is 7.17 cents per kilowatt hour. Representatives of Sopac indicated a current rate of the low nine cents per kilowatt hour, possibly. A rate will be locked in during the month of September by Sopac with AEP Energy, which was our original energy provider when we began this program 10 years ago, once the city manager gives approval. So, under this new process, the city will no longer be the electric government aggregator. Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council will be the new aggregator under an agreement approved by city council and signed in June of 2025. Under Sopac's plan of operation and government, governance, also approved by city council, the contract for electric power will be signed by Sopac rather than the city. Therefore, council approval will not be required. Once the rate is selected by Sopac with the consent of the city manager, the new electric rate will be given to city council, and then opt-out letters will be prepared and sent to residents and small businesses. So I just wanted to give you that information. There are some changes coming down the road, and of course, as we all know, electric rates have been increasing. We've seen that with Duke's price to compare over the last six months. Speaking of rates, I'd like to comment on water and sewer rates. The Ohio EPA conducts a water and sewer rate survey each year. The most recent survey is for 2023. The mean yearly cost for a model household which consumes 4,000 gallons of water per month is $481.34 for water and $528.03 for sewer. The city's electric, excuse me, the cities of Oxford's rates were $274 for water and $309 for sewer. So the city of Oxford's rates are well below the mean yearly cost for the Ohio households. In Butler County, for example, only Fairfield, Monroe, and Trenton are listed in the survey. For water, the rates are $255 in Fairfield, $464 in Monroe, and $382 in Trenton. For sewer, the rates are $300 in Fairfield, $216 in Monroe, and $340 in Trenton. The Butler County Water and Sewer Department owns and maintains the sanitary sewer system for the city of Monroe. The city increased water and sewer rate, volume rates, excuse me, by 2% in 2023, 0% in 2024, and 3% in 2025. So I'll be recommending to city council a 6% water and a 4% sewer rate increase in 2026 in our fee ordinance in preparation for the final requirements of the water softening project in water and the phosphorus removal project in sewer. The city will still remain well below the yearly cost for Ohio households even with these recommended increase, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, chief?
Nothing.
No?
Heidi?
Nothing, thank you.
Chief Dethridge?
No.
Okay, thank you. Sam?
Just a final reminder for an open house tomorrow evening at the Oxford Lane Library, 6:30 PM, for the bike and pedestrian master plan, planning project. We've had real good success with the consultant that we've got working on that, so we're proud of where that's at. And then also, in light of the Student Community Relations Commission, I wanted to highlight some student work that we had over the weekend through the Wilkes Institute for Leadership in the Woodside Cemetery, so just, I have 15 students out there just doing some cleaning of headstones, and so just highlighting the student involvement in the community is really great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Chris?
No. I'll save mine for later.
All right, thank you. Mike?
I'm sure this will, will be the first in many accolades, but great job by Seth Croppenbaker and city staff on Oxtoberfest, and even tell the guys in streets that take down the detour signs, I saw them well after 10 o'clock doing that too, so much appreciated. And I'll also start the round of condemnation of political violence. We settle our differences at the ballot box, not at the barrel of a gun.
Thank you.
I have two comments. The first one, thank you to the chief and the rest of the fire department who came whenever we called them because we saw smoke and we smelled this horrible smell, and so it felt really nice with how fast y'all were, and you just rushed in when all of us were terrified with our, our animals that were patients, so thank you so much. And then the other exciting thing is that Mike and I were just reviewing something that will be coming forward to the next meeting. So we, OSH and Lane Library, and somebody else, or no, those two organizations hosted a really wonderful documentary and had Dr. Raoul come out and talk about best practices, about eviction protection, and it was a great documentary. Hopefully everyone is able to, to watch it. I was really lucky to be a panelist, so thank you so much for letting me be involved and having that expert in the room, Dr. Raoul, who studies this, and have her say, these are the impactful things you can do that are very tangible, that are not preempted by the state of Ohio, that are things that other cities do, was really exciting. And right there at that meeting, Mike and I were like, let's do it. Let's take one of those and let's just do them. So, we were reviewing the ordinance that will be in your inboxes, Doug, and within tonight sometime, and so this is something that is looking at the best practices from cities around the state. Columbus seems to be the one that has the most defined ordinance on source of income discrimination when it comes to housing, so that'll be kind of applying that into our own ordinances, which, yeah, so it'll be really exciting. And so I want to thank Mike for his partnership and OSH and Lane Library for bringing all these people together and the wonderful experts in the documentary, and really excited for us to vote on this in the near future.
Thank you. Amber?
I also want to congratulate everyone who worked on Oxtoberfest. It was wonderful. The rain didn't scare people away, and I saw community or student groups, fraternities, I think, helping with setup and breakdown, and so I want to thank them as well. Also condemning political violence and the smallest thing, like really just walking down the street and looking someone in the eye who you do not know and saying hello or good morning or nodding, or if you had a four-way stop and someone lets you go first because you got there at the same time, waving and saying thank you. They might not return it, but doing those tiny things reminds us of our own humanity, and I think that when we're in a season of fear, rather than a season of love and power and a strong mind, we are more likely to sort of close ourselves off and not acknowledge each other's humanities. So please, say hello, wave, smile. Small gestures can be really powerful.
Thank you. Jason?
Nothing additionally for me tonight.
Okay.
So two quick little things, because I can hold this up. One is that a local group called Wild Ones that I'm part of, along with Charles Stevens and Barbara Smith and others, so it's a native plant organization, we're hosting a workshop this Sunday at the Lane Library at 3:00 to 4:30, and it's about deer overpopulation and management. You know, we in council have been talking about this, but we're, we're moving closer. I saw that the city's in its weekly announcement kind of announced the program, and there's a great website that talks about the kind of management program that's coming. I think it, not everyone 100% understands the whys and the hows, and so we'll be there with people talking about the deer, the site, the science issues, but we'll also have a representative from White Buffalo will be there to answer any kind of questions or concerns. If you see the deer, now that we're in this drought condition, you see how hungry they are now, it's just going to get worse as it gets colder. I also wanted, it was wonderful to see such a big crowd here tonight, and this is like, as I have only somewhere many more meetings before I, off of council, is that it was awesome, but we had a capital budget work session that I'm not sure anybody from the public attended. And, and I'm going to encourage everybody, particularly since I'm looking at some folks who are potentially going to be on council, you know, I know what, when, when I came on, Council Ragoo, she was like, you know, our budgets have to reflect our values, and so I hope those of us in the public who maybe don't love spreadsheets, but including some of us on council, I'm not a spreadsheet guy, but, but we need to always look at the budget to see, are our values reflected? If we say something's important, are there dollars allocated in the budget for that? And so I think that's something that's going to be a continual process. If we say that, that solar is important, are we budgeting for it? And this is also something I'm going to say, I mean, I, I've beaten the drum for a while, we always look at the budget year ahead of us, but there's a capital budget that's four additional years beyond, and that's how things that are big projects work their way up to the present. And currently, there's never, we never have a conversation about the long-range budget plan. Like, it's, we're not going to talk about today, so when do we talk about it? So I encourage all of us to, we were talking about this at the end, like, maybe it's another work session, but if we're talking about some long-range thing that we need to start working for, we as council have to be talking about those things to make sure they percolate up to the present, otherwise, you know, they may not get there. So, so that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to echo the comments about political violence. The latest is not the first. It's a series of events where people have taken to violence to solve their problems, and as Mike said, the ballot box is for that, and, and civil discussion is for that. I don't think we should think that this is worse than any other, it's just in a series, and it has to stop. Secondly, I want to thank everyone who is involved with Oxtoberfest. I told them, but I do want to publicly say how great the event was, and it makes me glad to be an Oxbortian again because we just had a great time. I think everybody there had a smile on their face, and it was just a real chill day. I would, I just have to comment that I think the price for electricity seems awfully high given that they have such a, a great number of communities behind them, and I hope that you talk with them about keeping it as low as possible. Finally, tomorrow, we have a very unique opportunity in Oxford, because with, in cooperation with Miami University, there will be a naturalization ceremony held at the university, it'll be held at... It'll be held at Armstrong, and it's at 10:00 AM, and it's open to the public, but there will be hundreds of people who have studied hard and probably know more about the Constitution and the laws of this country than most of the people in this room. So I hope we are able to be there. I will be there. Let's support our newest citizens of the United States. And with that, we will then move to the final item, and I would entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 12122G3, which you all know, to consider pending and threatened litigation. Is there a motion to so adjourned?
With an apology, so moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Thank you all.
Did you want to roll for that?
Yes, roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Okay, now we are adjourned to executive session. Thanks, everybody. Now I need to real quickly find out whether I have to... Okay, I can do this by voice vote? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn from executive session at 9:15?
Seconded.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Posed. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.
So this is our dog, 14 years old. We went to Indian Lake on a whim, they said bring the dog. The dog, who is generally doesn't wander off, but she's old, she can't see, can't hear-